It's a great day in Kershaw County, an all-American county. I think we have time now, it's 17:30 hours, about submarine time.
Yes, sir, it is.
Mr. Tucker? We have a quorum, I want to especially welcome back Mr. Gardner, who has diligently been recovering from an operation. It's terrific to have you back, sir. We're delighted you're here.
Good to be back.
Also, we're delighted to see that Camden's Elementary School will be ribbon-cut today at 6:00. We'll probably miss that, I would guess. We had one in the Lugolf area last week, and we're gonna have another one this week. It is a great day in this county. With that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bozard to lead us in the invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
Good morning, Father. This day you've given us, I just thank you for all the blessings of life that you've given each one of us. These are gifts from you, and I just pray, Father, we will treasure them as gifts from our God and our Lord and our Savior. In this time that we come to do county business, I just pray that you would be with each one of us. Let us have the understanding that we can do the best job possible for all the people of Kershaw County, and for all the asking in the gate and holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bozard. And I'll turn to Mr. DeBoz to bring forward any public comments. Sir.
The first person that signed up is Donnie Cato.
Mr. Cato, how many total do we have signed up?
We have seven people signed.
Seven people. We asked Mr. Cato, hey, good to see you. We ask you to keep it to about five minutes, and we'll keep a clock so we can keep this moving along. Keep your comments focused on your topic, and keep it respectful of this body. I regret to say, our procedures are that we don't have a question and answer, period. So, this is just to hear from you, but we'll make sure we have your contact information so we can follow up with you and anybody else. Please, Mr. Cato.
Thank you, Mr. Truman and Council, for allowing me just a few minutes to speak. I come to you this afternoon with great concern about our fire protection in the northeastern part of Kershaw County. Today, on my farm, which is located in the Timrod community, not in Bethune, we have a Bethune mailing address, but we live in Timrod community. And, in my opinion, that's one of the greatest communities it is in Kershaw County. Right, Mr. Gardner?
Absolutely.
That's Mr. Gardner's base up there.
A lot of family there.
Right. This morning, as we were making our rounds on the farm, we were fortunate enough to be there, and we had a fire in our number seven house, in the ceiling of the house. We had a receptacle feeding, a feed line motor that had shorted out, and had it not been for the fire protective type insulation that's in those houses, then we most likely would have lost that house, plus maybe another one or two. I come to you this afternoon encouraging you, begging you, asking you, whatever it takes, to get a full-time person up there in the northeastern part of the county. Perhaps it would be just a matter of moving some resources of a truck that's manned over to the new fire station. Wouldn't have to have an addition to that station, but just a truck there with a full-time person. Now, we do have a full-time person, but he rotates all over. Now, that person today had to come from Shepherd to come to my farm. And they did respond in a timely manner, did a good job once they got to my farm and got the fire under control. I like to bring to your attention what's in Timrod community. In a seven-mile radius, most of you don't realize that there's an investment up there of tens of millions of dollars in poultry and agriculture businesses. Now, just to give you a little respect, but what's there in that seven-mile radius is Calmain Foods, millions and millions of dollars to put that operation there. Holton Foods, or Holton's Farms, which is a hog operation, faring operation, it raises tens of thousands of pigs per year. That farm belongs to Dr. Ron Prestige. And the other farms that's in that area, we have eleven Prestige turkey operations there, and one Circle S operation. Those farms, when I built my first four houses in 1994, cost me $300,000. I built four additional farms in 2000, four additional houses in 2007, cost me a half a million dollars. Now, when you put all those houses and all those farms together, just there in that one little circle, you're not talking about a few million dollars, you're talking about possibly a hundred million dollar investment that we have in that northeastern part of the county. Now, I think, with moving the resources around a little bit, we can get a full-time person up there when we need them. I'll give you an example of that, and then I'll sit down, because I think you understand where I'm coming from. In my remembrance of my life, there's never been a deputy that's assigned to the northeastern part of Kershaw County. Sheriff Lee Bone, he's been in office a month or two now, and he has a full-time deputy, resident deputy, in the northeastern part of Kershaw County. Nearly every time that I'm out on the road, I meet that deputy. He's doing a super job up there. Now, if the sheriff can move a person up there, when all the rest of these sheriffs before him couldn't put one up there, using, I think, the same pool of resources of men and equipment, then certainly we can move a person up there, demand a truck, and the other trucks can follow, once we get one there, and knock it down enough that can possibly save a million-dollar farm. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cato, very much. Uh, Mr. DeBoz?
The second person is Stephen Lee.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking to the ordinance regarding containers. I am an owner of a container, I have a, I'm a pastor on Black River Road. I pastor Mount Olivet Baptist Church now for 26 years, and I've started a cattle operation known as Meanwhile Ranch, and I found that the container was greatly beneficial for me. Mine probably would not even be recognizable as a container, because I built a shed over it, but I don't think that everybody should have to do that. My brother was a farmer, and he parked his container behind my dad's house. It's visible from the road in the winter, but not in the spring or the summer. These containers are really helpful. I lease land, I lease 117 acres on the Charlotte Thompson School Road, from a man that has denied me the permission to build a barn, but I was going to, before the ordinance, I became aware of the ordinance, I was gonna ask permission to put a container there, because it's the only way I can put chemicals and tools and secure them. I've had a lot of theft in the years that I've been farming, probably totaling somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 of equipment stolen, and, you know, this kind of stuff just never comes back. I'm also the principal of Mount Olivet Christian School, which has been in our community for nearly 42 years, and I don't need a container there, but I would like to know that on the back edge of the Mount Olivet Church property, if I needed a place to store something, I could have that convenient storage, which is not permanent. I understand that there's a lot of concerns over issues. When I first heard of the container ordinance, I thought of the multiple buildings in our county and city that are nothing but caved-in old wrecks of houses that, from what I understand, are homeless shelters unofficial, and crack houses unofficial. So, I know that this is a really big problem, but I think that the container is actually a benefit to people that need it. Now, having said that, I understand there are communities that would not want one in there, but they, I think, have covenants for those kinds of issues that cover that, and fortunately, where I'm fixing to build my house, there is no such covenant, so I'll be building about 100 yards from my container, which you wouldn't know to be a container. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend Lee. Uh, sir, Mr. Boz?
Third person signed up is Angela Huff.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
I am gonna speak, and then I wanna go see the new school. So, I wanna talk about the ordinances, the container ordinance. I have, I passed some on the way here, and they were at construction sites, so obviously people need to use them. I also have one near our farm that, you know, is like Ms. Reverend Lee was talking about, it has a covering on it, you wouldn't even know it, but if you put a screening in front of it, it would really detract from what the people have done with that container and that shed over it. And I don't know if you watch DIY, but the shipping containers make really good homes, and they're easy to insulate, and they're easy to cool, and they're easy to warm, and that goes back to, you know, recycling things, and not just putting them in landfills, and it also goes to our homeless shelters. If you really wanted to solve a problem, you could have multiple of these, you can dress them up and make them nice, and then when the hurricanes come, they're a lot safer than some of these other buildings, and the buildings he was talking about that people do use that are in disrepair. So, I'm just concerned that it can't be a main structure, and how you want to hide it, and hiding things is not always a good thing, and it just gets to be, are you gonna grandfather those people in that already have theirs? Because this man, I don't know if y'all know how many containers there are, but, and I don't know him, I just ride by his house, but it looks very, very nice, and if I had that, I would enjoy it, but with my school stuff, but it seems like you're just, you go back to what I said last year, you first do no harm, and that should be your first oath. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Please, Mr. Boz?
Next person signed up is Justin Jones.
All right, Mr. Jones, thank you.
Good evening, members of council and county administration. It's a pleasure to speak to you tonight. I would like to start my comments tonight by addressing some local issues that have been on my mind of late. To begin with, the storage container ordinance, which, more specifically, I have a concern with Line G, where there is no specific definition of properly maintained, and also Line C, which seems to devolve into convoluted language regarding how to conceal the container, as well as relying on the arbitrary opinion of a planning official to ensure compliance. This, as you can imagine, makes me somewhat nervous, as it showed anyone who's reading this ordinance. Next, I'd like to move on to the issue of the sewage tax, which I have paid diligently, as I'm required to, but it only occurred to me recently to actually ask what concrete benefit I received from it. When I posed this question to my council representative, I was told somewhat bluntly, absolutely nothing. Granted, that was his opinion, but that was what he said. In fact, as longer we talked about it, the more it occurred to me, in my personal opinion, that it was a slush fund used by this council to fund something what I would call pet projects, for lack of a better term. Finally, I'd like to address economic development, and more specifically, the end of last year, when a member of this council did his due diligence and exposed the Economic Development Commission's use of, at best inaccurate, and at worst outright fraudulent, job numbers with regards to their efforts for creating jobs in Kershaw County. I wanted to personally thank this council member for his diligence, and express my concern that he seemed to be alone in his efforts. That leads me to the bigger issue of what the job of a local council is, as I see it. The job description, I would say, involves protecting the rights of its citizens from usurpation, and to act as a united defense and bulwark against outside encroachment of these rights, and finally, to serve as a deliberative body as regards the issues that concern us all. And by deliberative, I mean to introduce, scrutinize, discuss, and debate with open minds and votes reserved until the debate is concluded. As it seems lately, too often for my comfort, many council members walk into this seeming to have already discussed issues, knowing where their opinions are and who's going to vote for what. It is certainly not the job of a local council to take money out of our pockets to fund projects that they deem worthy. It is certainly not their job to micromanage our daily lives, nor to equate the will of a majority of the council as being the same as the will of the people in general, and certainly not to replace our individual priorities with priorities shared by council members. This led me to considering something that I call the Instruction Manual for Governance, which includes documents such as the U.S. and South Carolina Constitution, the Federalist and Anti-Federalist Papers, the Magna Carta, the English Bill of Rights, the Mayflower Compact, the writings of John Locke, Adam Smith, philosophers of Plato and Socrates, and to ask you gentlemen, if any of you have actually read these documents, and if so, and if, sorry, and if not, why not? And if you have not, can we honestly say that you have approached this job with a serious heart, and if not, instead, just showed up with a pocketful of good intentions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. DeBoz?
The next person signed up is Penray Gustafson.
Mrs. Gustafson?
Good evening. I'm Penray Gustafson. I'm here on behalf of Food for the Soul. I'm on its board, and I'm an active volunteer, and I thought I would update this council and the public of what we've been doing, what we did in 2018, and some of our plans for 2019. For those who don't know, Food for the Soul is a homeless shelter, and we also provide meals Tuesday through Friday, breakfast and lunch, and scatter meals and distribute meals throughout the county. And I wanted to say, in 2018, just in the month of December, we served 357 breakfasts, 1,012 lunches, 358 dinners. Total meals for just December was 1,727, and that's a low month. We assisted for the year 2018, total of 104 people, 63 men, 33 women, and eight children. We do accept men, women, and children. Doesn't matter your age or your circumstance, as long as you're, you live in the county or you reside in the county, we'll shelter you, and there's no limit to how long you can stay if you're needed, if you need there. We are also the only shelter within 14 nearby counties that take in men, women, and children without going on some sort of waiting list. So, we have sincerely saved the county and its municipalities a lot of financial burden by being able to assist all these stranded individuals, or travelers also. Our director, Darlene Thomas, is phenomenal. She is a wonderful woman, her heart is in it. Their board members are active and involved, and we have, we've almost doubled in size our board, and we have all kinds of people who come through there. We have people who are not just homeless, of course, we have, we have people who are in need of some social interaction, have some elderly people who come in just to see other people, have other people who are just really, really tight on the dollar, and they can't afford all the meals in the month. Right now, we are currently serving an 82-year-old man with dementia and a family of four. And this family of four has been spotted in Camden, and actually, I talked with a whole bunch of people online today with one of the public pages about this family specifically. It was really great to hear individuals in the community speaking up, and actually, some people had taken upon themselves to help this family, and we have been also at Food for the Soul. But it's just, you know, I think there's misnomers out there for a homeless shelter, because we're so much more than that. We've also hired a social services person who's there four nights, five nights a week, 20 hours a week, that's it, five nights a week, and to take care of some of these extra issues and problems that so many of our patrons have. We are located at 110 East DeKalb, and our number is 432-4771. And of course, when you're a charity and you're helping people, you have to have fundraisers. And we have our annual golf tournament coming up on March 28th, and we are looking for corporate sponsors, anybody in the room would like to be a sponsor, and also Midlands Gives, which is on May 7th. We are happy to serve this community, and they do an awesome job. And Food for the Soul really feels that the organization represents hope and love and respect that is often not received in the outside world for these people who come through our doors. But thank you for listening, and when things come up with Food for the Soul, we'll keep the council informed and the public informed. And in fact, I wanna publicly thank Jim Tatum for this wonderful article that was in the Chronicle Independent on December 25th, Christmas. It says, "Not Just a Soup Kitchen," and we're not. So, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Next person is Curtis Blackman.
Uh, Mr. Blackman?
Good afternoon. As you know, we're not a communist-type government yet, and this type of government tells you exactly what you can do. Even though we're not that way yet, we may be if we continue to ask for laws to control everything that we disagree with. I do not own a container, but someday I might want to, and I would not want to deal with some type of law restricting this ownership. As an example, my wife and I were looking at a TV program on home buying just before I came here. One home the couple considered was in a neighborhood that said, "No fences." Well, they had a dog, and they needed a fence. So, what do you think happened? Did they ask county council to pass a law to allow fences? No, they went somewhere else. My point here is that we don't need laws to control every aspect of our lives. Concerning containers, if you live in a subdivision that does not want them, they control that. People in any area can control what they want in that particular area. We don't need government involvement and laws to pass to do this.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. DeBoz?
The last person who signed up is Tom Webb III.
Uh, Mr. Webb?
Well, I wanted to speak about containers too, but something else that's kind of connected with that, and the last fella kind of stole some of my thunder. It's a remaking of America. We see this happening, picking on Trump, our president, all the time, trying to do him in, get rid of him, taking down our monuments, turning our young people in the universities into little socialists. We keep getting this long string of never-ending ordinances that changes the way people think when they are going to submit to ordinances, and, you know, it affects their lifestyle and affects the way they think, and so the next ordinance that comes along might be a little easier to swallow. It just doesn't look like there's ever gonna be any end to it, and I object to that. I think it's part of the taking down of America, and I don't know where it's coming from exactly. I'm not blaming you exactly, but I think you're being used to some extent by something, somewhere. This sends us these bright ideas that we should have another ordinance. This container ordinance, in my opinion, is stepping on private property rights. There was an attempt to pass an ordinance back in 2016, that's it, it's almost the same ordinance that you will be working on tonight. The only thing that's different about it is that the end of this, it says, "No advertising is to be displayed on the containers, and must be free of graffiti, posters, bills, or other deteriorating impacts," which I would consider an encroachment on First Amendment, free speech. That if you have a big wall, you ought to be able to put an American flag on it, or something from the Bible, or vote for so-and-so, it's your right, First Amendment. Well, they took that out, so we have the right to put it on our containers now, if we have a container. Only thing now, you have to shield the container from public view, so, again, they have undone our First Amendment and our right to have something out there that we say, "Look at this, I'm proud of this, look at what I'm saying, look at my flag." It's just another one of those attempts, I think, to do something good that really is not a good thing at all. And I know where this is coming from. Somebody on council slipped me some paperwork. I can't tell you who, but somebody did. This is it, the Comprehensive Plan from about 10 years ago. It's like 300 and something pages. Now, we have more openness now, people can find out what's going on. You can look online, and you can find it. Back 10 years ago, you couldn't do that. If you wanted to know anything about what's in this Comprehensive Plan, you didn't know where to look. You would go to Planning and Zoning, and they would charge you 50 cents a page for it, 300 pages, that's $150, for somebody out in the boondocks to come into Camden and get a copy of the Comprehensive Plan. And I don't think Comprehensive Plans is the way to go at all. It's a way to snow the people, they don't know what's in it. So, I found, in all of this stuff, I found the sentence where this idea of a prohibition on containers comes from. So, it's right in here, and I will... See if I can, you know, lost my place now. Might be here all night trying to find what I'm looking for, to read through all of this stuff. I think I marked it with a little piece of tape, see if I can find it. There's one little sentence in all of this 300 and something pages.
There's the tape, turn it over.
I should've brought a trash bag to put all of this in, it's where it belongs. We say that we have, that there is a, an ordinance that prohibits something, but it's not been prohibited. Apparently, it hasn't not been prohibited, because people have had these containers forever, and there has been no prohibition, so it's not a valid law, it's been non-existent all the time. Sorry, sorry. Here we go. Here it is, I finally found it. Sorry for using up your time that way. Privacy and decorative fences and walls are permitted along the property line of any lot or parcel in compliance with the visibility requirements of this section. All fences and walls used as part of the buffer area requirements must have a finished side that is facing the adjoining property. The interior side of the fence or wall may be finished as owner deems appropriate. That means that if you live next door to your mother, and you wanna put up a fence, your side of the fence can be rough, but her side has to be finished. But that's not what I was looking for, I'm sorry. But that's just another incidence, another example of this overbearing government that wants to terror us, wants to tell us what to do, it's micromanaging our lives, and we don't need it. We're Americans. You know, those young fellows, these Catholics, that were verbally assaulted recently, y'all know that's in the news, and the media wanted to play it one way, when in actuality, it was another. it was another. And there was a Vietnam veteran there, American Indian, who was in their faces trying to get some kind of bad reaction so it could show up on camera. He didn't quite get it. These young fellows looked out for their decorum. They did very well, these young Catholic fellows. Not all of them were white either. And they were being accosted by something called the, what is it, the black Israelis. News media, again, is on the wrong side of everything. But let me, out of all of this mess, I have found the sentence I wanted to find. Out of all of this mess, it says, "The use of mobile or manufactured homes, shipping containers, or similar structures as accessory buildings should not be permitted in any zoning district." That's all there is to that. And I think it's a bad law. It's not a law. It hasn't been, they haven't been prohibited. It's nonsense. And all of this belongs in the trash. It's the wrong way to do government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBoz.
Well, that concludes the sign-up list.
Very good. And that concludes public comments. We'll move now to adoption of agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Very good. A second, please.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Welcome back, Mr. Gardner. Discussion. I would point out that there will be two executive sessions tonight. The first one before the administrator's contract and we'll adjourn briefly and come back for a vote. And the second one at the regularly scheduled executive time and we'll come back and probably not vote. Any further discussion, yes, sir?
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I was under the impression that we were going to have both executive sessions at the end of the meeting.
Well, the idea would be, we could do that, but, and I'm certainly willing to forego an executive session before we vote on Mr. Carpenter. Is it the view of everybody here that we need an executive session?
If I may, if I may, and then we start here for somebody else. You know, I've been on this council 13 years and the reason, and Mr. Tucker, you know this as well, we held the executive sessions at the end of the meeting is, one, the folks that got here at 5:30, made a trip here. I don't think it's fair for us to go back there where there's 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, or an hour and cause you'd have to wait. Secondly, the people that are watching live streaming, the people that will watch the reruns of live streaming, I just don't think it's fair to them. I would like to see us maintain and continue to have the executive sessions, both of them, you know, at the end of the meeting so we don't inconvenience the people here and also the folks that are watching.
I'm happy with that. Any other discussion? There won't have a single executive session, but we will proceed with a vote on item number one.
Correct.
Is everyone happy with that?
Is that a form of emotion or we don't need it?
We don't need it.
We don't need it. I just want to say, good, then we'll leave it as it's written and I won't declare an executive session. With that, we can move to a vote on the agenda as written. Fair enough? With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there will be an executive session to discuss administrator's contract, but it will be at the end of the meeting, just as we will, I think we have an ethic issue we have to discuss.
That's correct.
Yeah. So we'll just have two issues to deal with in our executive session, which we'll do at the end of the meetings.
And then you want to come back and address item C?
Correct.
Tab C.
Correct.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
Right. That's what he's saying.
Oh, okay. Then I think that would be a bit of an amendment, would it not? We're moving the administrator's vote to the end. Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. I don't think he would call for an amendment, but we can certainly get a clarification from the county attorney. This is to discuss the contract in executive session at the end of the meeting so we're not putting everybody out sitting and waiting.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Oh, she's just going to skip item C when you go down and then we roll out into executive session?
That to me is an amendment of the, of the agenda.
Clarification, Ken.
Well, now it's clarification of the agenda. I think the chairman probably has the inherent power to reorder things under new business. He can't, he couldn't change them, but I think the chairman, unless somebody calls for point of order, Snodgrass mentioned that.
So we're looking around.
I think unless somebody calls for point of order, Mr. Chairman, you could move number C to the end of the new business.
Very good. So we shall do that and announce that intent during this discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and we'll do that just as y'all have laid out. With that, we move now to approval of minutes. I note that Mr. Gardner was not present at the last one because of surgery. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman. We approve the minutes.
Mr. Tucker.
That submitted by clerk to council, Ms. Mary, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. And second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Cornell and any discussion? And seeing there is no discussion, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous with Mr. Gardner abstaining. We move now to a series of ordinances. First reading of an ordinance by Kershaw County to amend a code for zoning and land development. It's at tab B and it's also up on the screen. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce it, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight, first reading of an ordinance to amend the existing ordinance related to shipping containers. Comes to council from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which voted in December.
Very good. Can we have a motion to introduce it? I believe that's introduced by Mr. Bozard.
Yes, I do have this just for discussion and a vote.
Very good. Now we have a second, please.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that you, David?
Yes.
Yeah, very good for Mr. Snodgrass. Do you want to lead into discussion, Mr. Boz?
Thank you. Now, this is the same motion that last week we had a little discussion, just agreement on between the, our agenda and some other issues, but now we've got it straightened out. This container, as we stand right now, is not allowed in Kershaw County. If you've got them in your land, they're illegal. There has been at least one case that I know of that a container had to be moved off the property because of neighbors complaining about it. This motion, as we read it right here now, was at my request from Planning and Zoning and Mr. Carpenter to rework it so we could allow containers throughout Kershaw County. What we have on the agenda here tonight is the results of Planning and Zoning and the Planning and Zoning Board. This is what they presented us to county council. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read what has been presented to us. Shipping containers, this is under section 3, 2.53 and H in parentheses. When conditionally permitted by table 3.3, general development, rule development 1, rule development 2, MRD 1, the use of storage containers shall be governed by the following. Shipping containers shall not be used as a principal use or construction. Shipping containers shall not be located in front of any principal building or structure. Shipping containers shall be permanently screened from public view. Screening shall be accomplished by a divide not less than eight foot in height. Screening may be accomplished by the use of slight obstructions, plant materials, general level green, earth berms, walls, fences, proper setting of elements, building placement, or other design techniques approved by the planning zone. Shipping containers shall not be stacked. Shipping containers shall not be located in any required side or rear setback areas. And I'm going to have to ask Mr. Cornell about that one because I didn't think that, I mean, Michael Conley, because I didn't think we're allowed to build in any setback areas anyway and I don't understand why that one's in there. The number of accessory shipping containers shall not exceed one per lot, except where the building to which it is accessible exceeds one acre, then additional shipping container may be established for each acre, provided they meet all the requirements. Shipping containers shall be properly maintained at all times. This is the way it is right now and I'm going to leave this right where it's at right now because at the next voting, the next meeting, I do have a motion to change some of this in there.
Okay, just to see if I can understand it. This law now exists. This is not putting in place a new law, but amending an old law. Is that correct?
Back to the right.
And it makes the law more, it relaxes the law. So on that basis, you introduced it.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Other discussions, maybe from the second, Mr. Snodgrass or anybody?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just to speak on the reason why, second, first of all, you know, the way the county government works, you have several readings and we get this on the floor and it enables us, county council, to further have discussion with constituents. Personally, as I see it, I realize that while this is not an active enforced ordinance, it is indeed an ordinance. And I have, I have friends, folks in my district who do have shipping containers and from my view, this is providing citizens the liberty and the freedom to be able to have this. Now, I will, I will say that what's coming to us from Planning and Zoning is a little, yeah, you know, it's a little too restrictive for my taste, but the beauty of county government is that we're able to make changes. Public are able to come and you're able to give public comment. I mean, this is not the state house or federal government where it takes years to get things done. We're able to tweaks and make, make changes. So I believe this gets us on the right road to providing liberty and freedom for shipping containers for homeowners, should they, should they deem that's a decision that they want to make.
Okay, thank you, sir. Other comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Let me start by saying that I oppose the ordinance that's in front of us tonight. Therefore, I intend to vote against it. However, I plan to present an ordinance that repeals the prohibition against storage containers at a later date. In other words, council is right. There is a law that does not allow storage containers. But what this amendment does, you want to talk about convoluted bureaucracy. It is very confusing. I would like my, so I would say to Pastor Lee, Mrs. Huff, Justin Jones, Curtis Blackwell, and all those others that got up and spoke, my proposal will absolutely eliminate the ordinance that should not have been in there. And I spoke with someone today who was on the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time and it was not a unanimous vote whenever they voted in that storage container ordinance. And bottom line is, this will fix it for everybody. In other words, let your HOAs, your homeowner associations, handle it. And if we see that it becomes a problem, we can always go back and readdress it. But my recommendation is we wait, we send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and we ask them to repeal the existing ordinances on the books that does not allow storage containers. Let me, let me say this. Let me finish. I'll say this to some of you who have storage containers. Don't think this law may protect you. You better make sure because some of you may be in violation based on this amendment that we're doing. We don't know. But this amendment alone brings a page and a half of a lot of regulations and is going to lead to more and more and more and more. And I know you agree with me, Mr. Tucker. So having said that, I would like to hear from my colleagues, but that's what I plan to do.
Mr. Bozard.
Mr. Boz, you might be able to help me out. I don't think this has to go back to the Planning and Zoning. It can be handled right here if we wanted to do that option. Is that correct?
Well, it's got to be germane to the ordinance. And the ordinance for you is to amend those regulations for accessory structures and uses. So depending how the, how it's structured, and I don't know that, it could be broadened. This ordinance could be amended and broadened. It could be amended and changed.
Right.
So as long as it's germane to the caption, which is regulations for accessory structures and uses, as long as the amendment's germane to that, it can be done. I don't know what the amendment is, so you're asking me a hypothetical question.
Is that the way you see it, Mr. Jones?
No. Are you speaking about my proposal?
Yes.
No, my proposal would have to go back. Would you give clarification on that, Mr. DeBoz? My, my recommendation to...
Eliminate it.
To eliminate the container law.
Well, the container law now is under 3.2, 5.2 general requirements, which says the use of mobile homes, shipping containers cannot be permitted as accessory buildings. I think the ordinance as written could probably be amended to strike the requirement that shipping containers cannot be accessory buildings in any zoning district, if that's what you want to do. But I mean, you have other things involved too. So I don't know how, there are other requirements as to accessory buildings, correct? I mean, accessory buildings have other requirements, don't they?
Can you come forward, Mike?
Mike, if you allowed, here's a question. If you allowed a storage container to be in accessory buildings, are there other requirements in the zoning code? Are there not, to deal with accessory buildings?
For accessory containers, we don't have any exist, any other compounding restrictions on accessory structures for shipping containers because they're not permitted in the...
Yeah, but if you take them out of that sentence...
If you just take them out of that, you're generally going to allow them throughout the county with no restriction.
With no restriction.
Correct.
As to number or use, or the overriding districts would restrict the use, wouldn't it? If you couldn't use them commercially.
Right. If you keep them up under the accessory use itself, then they would have the same restrictions that an accessory structure would have.
Correct.
Unless you just struck that out altogether, yes, sir.
But I think Mr. Jones wants, I don't know what exactly the amendment is. I'm having a little bit of a difficult time here. But Mr. Jones says he wants to repeal restrictions as to accessory buildings. Is that not correct, Mr. Jones?
Correct.
Well, let me just, let me make sure I understand this here. Mr. Jones, let's look at paragraph D. It says, "Mobile or manufactured homes, shipping containers, similar structures as accessory buildings shall not be permitted." So you want to strike them all?
No, I do not. That's not what I said. I said, "Storage containers."
Yeah, that's good. I wanted everybody to understand what the nuance that Mr. Jones was using. This is not just a shipping container ordinance that we're trying to amend. This is for a larger range. So you heard what Mr. Jones said. So I'd look forward to seeing how you, you and Mr. Bozard would want to amend this thing. Okay? Is that helpful? I think that was, that's what you're trying to get at, right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we're, we're pretty close on the same page here. Basically, bottom line is, I want to appeal any restrictions on storage containers throughout Kershaw County. And I don't know that that would mean striking the whole, we, we wouldn't have to strike the entire ordinance or the entire line. We could just strike that one title, which is storage containers.
And that's what this amendment does, but let me, can I ask again another point?
Sure.
I'm just trying to get clear on this. There are people who are calling me, asking that this restriction be removed. Okay, and that's in favor of the amendment. There are other people who say they want to tighten it up. So we have, we've heard from a large number of people who have, and here tonight, who are against any restriction, but there are some people who are landowners who want to protect their property. How do you get at that issue is my question, sir?
Here's, here's my position on that. Based on the folks that I've been speaking with, and it's been a large number of folks, I believe that we should not be regulating every single thing people can do on their properties. I think this is a deregulation. I think it's a good thing. I think that it wasn't an issue. I've been here 13 years. I think I've had two complaints on storage containers and they were handled. I can tell you now, this amendment passes, that Mr. Bozard has put on the books, there's going to be some enforcement on storage containers. And let me, let me go along and mention this too. This is limited use of storage containers only in maybe three or four different zoned areas, not anywhere in Kershaw County. So if you wanted to get a storage container in certain areas of Kershaw County to store some product in, to store some, some stuff in for a period of time, you would not be able to do that. I'm saying there's some HOAs, these neighborhoods, that protect them. We don't need to regulate a law telling people everything they can do. I can assure you, this amendment that's on the floor now is very confusing. Setbacks, covers, blinds, you know. I just simply want to repeal and delete the storage container.
Yeah, let me, let me be clear here, though. Let me take a prerogative as a chairman, just for a second, just for clarification. We agree this is not, this ordinance is not a storage container. The ordinance is wider. We agree that this language that takes out shipping containers should be done, but I'm trying to find the word "storage containers" in the ordinance.
Could we ask Mr. DeBoz for clarification on that?
I'm just telling you as a fact, as I read the English here in front of me, it's "shipping containers."
Well, "shipping container."
But it's different from what the language... But it's different from what the language we've heard from our public here tonight, that storage container.
No, I think it's semantics. I think
But it's semantics are important when we're trying to change the law. Mr. Bozard, you've been here since there was dirt here. Can you tell us what this is all about?
Mr. Chairman, the ordinance for you, yes, does remove shipping containers from being prohibited. And then it provides performance requirements as a using shipping containers. So it does require shipping containers. The people that spoke did call them containers, storage containers.
Yeah, and I've heard the councilman here tonight use the word "storage containers." Shipping containers to me represent those sea lion vans that you see down in Charleston on the back of those big boats, and they're ships, right, Mr. Tucker? But, Mr. Bozard, can you clarify what you're trying to fix here?
I'm talking about shipping containers. Storage containers, I know nothing about. I'm talking about the ordinance right now that says no shipping containers will be allowed in the county.
And so the complaints we've heard tonight are storage, yeah, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, the complaints you heard tonight
Let's listen to Mr. Jones, please.
I'm going to make this easy for you to clear it up because this is getting ridiculous a little bit to me. But anyway, bottom line is, the things that these folks were complaining about tonight is shipping containers. Whether you call it a shipping container, storage container, bottom line, we're talking about the same thing. And I don't think there's any confusion there with me. We're talking about the same thing, whether you say storage container or shipping container. Bottom line, I want to repeal that. And I want to repeal the prohibition against any storage, shipping container that's mentioned in the current ordinance.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Conley, could you chime in?
I'm going to refer to Mr. Bozard here in a minute, Mr. Bozard. Go right ahead.
You can read it three times and have a public hearing, I might add. But I think if you just left section one in, and then, addressing Mr. Jones here, and took section two out, Mr. Conley, if you amended the ordinance and left section one in, and by amendment took section two out, what would be the effect of that?
That would prohibit in the allowance of shipping containers in our county.
That would let 18-wheeler shipping containers
That would allow them. That would address Mr. Jones's issue, assuming he just wants to allow them, correct?
Yes, I mean, if that's what he was looking for, I would have to read the language.
Mr. Jones, yes, you could amend this ordinance by leaving section one in and amend it, take section two out. That would unconditionally allow shipping containers.
But, Mr. Bozard, if I may.
Now, Mr. Bozard's got the lead now. Please, go ahead. And I would like Mr. Bozard not to make legislation here tonight, okay? Thank you, sir.
Let's look at the regulation that's
He didn't. I think he was explaining it to us pretty good. Thank you, Mr. Bozard.
Let's look at the ordinances that's on our agenda. Item D right there under 3252, general requirements. Y'all should have a line through shipping containers. Do you have a line through it?
There it is.
Drop down to 3253. That is the stipulations of shipping containers. If we deleted that whole section, 3253, we would get rid of everything, wouldn't we, Mr.? We would get rid of shipping containers, right?
No, it'd be the opposite. You would allow shipping containers.
If we deleted, if we deleted that 3253
That's what he meant.
That would get rid of all shipping containers, right?
That would allow them. That's what he's asking.
That would get rid of all restrictions, yes.
That would take care of everything, wouldn't it? If we deleted that item.
I can't comment on what you mean by everything. If you deleted section two of the proposed ordinance
Well, no, wait a minute. Let me get ready to call a point of order. Both gentlemen have indicated their desire to bring before prepared documents for us to see in two weeks, or three weeks now, 12th of February. And in the interest of moving the discussion forward, I don't want to get into legislating here, but I think our questions are being answered so that y'all can come in on the 12th of February with an amendment. Let's let Mr. Conell speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and councilmembers. First question is, any existing shipping container would be grandfathered or nonconforming. Is that right? Would there be any retroactive impact of, just assume this passes tonight and it makes it through three readings, is there any retroactive impact for existing shipping containers?
In the form in which it's presented?
Mm-hmm.
No, I mean, again, we don't actively enforce, we passively enforce a zoning ordinance.
Would it be a nonconforming use for something that preexisted the code?
No, that's tough because under the definition of nonconforming, it means it had to been at one point in time legally established. And I don't believe, we would have to go back and look. We would give the benefit of doubt to the property owner, of course, as we traditionally do, but it would have had to been at some point in time legally established, so.
Right, well, if the government hadn't taken away those rights, that right would be retained to the
When I looked at, I think this got on in the books in 2010 when the unification of the code came about. I couldn't find it in the older ordinances. So again, you know, we're talking about something prior to 2010.
Okay, and then another question, Mr. Chairman. I don't mean to gum this up further, but maybe it's just how I read it. So under D, which has shipping containers deleted as a proposal, assuming shipping container stays in there, by implication, as I read it, it can, you can't use it as an accessory building, but it could be used as a primary building or some other primary principal structure. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, what we've done traditionally with the primary structures is we don't really regulate what a primary structure is per se of living in a residence. Building codes have traditionally done that. We go by the 2015 International Building Code. And it's pretty tough to amend a shipping container for it to be a legal residence. You have to have wiring certain distances apart, you have to water a certain distance apart, you have to have the insulation, you have to have, you'd have to cut holes into it. So then there's structural differences or questions. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what those are. But, you know, when you happen to put windows in these structures, because any residence has to have escape mechanisms and have to have windows. So, you know, there's a lot to it that you really have to start getting into when you actually have to make it a habitable structure. So we've always traditionally leaned back on that when we talk about, could it be lived in? And there's a different code for commercials. There's a whole nother code that goes under the commercials. And different states have different ordinances they go by, so, you know, it's hard to go from state to state.
Well, under the code as it exists now, I'll just assume that 2015 building code you referenced would allow for shipping containers to be used if they met up to certain standards.
Yes, sir.
I actually thought about using shipping containers to build my house at one point when I looked at the structural integrity. I've got a friend down in Charleston who actually has a house that's made out of two that are stacked, ironically. So as I read it now, you could use a shipping container for your primary residence under existing law if it met up with the One second, Mr. Bozard. I think he just confirmed for us, if a shipping container meets the building code requirements, you could use it as a primary structure or residence, but not as an accessory building. I think that's a fair reading.
That's my interpretation.
Mr. Bozard, let's keep it in the, he's asking the question.
If I could finish the thought, as the law sits now, we could use it as a primary structure or principal dwelling, but not as an accessory building for storage, which is kind of ironic. I think that's a little bit funny that you could use it for your house if it met certain standards, but you could not use it as a
The only thing I can think of, and not to cut you off, the only thing I think of is when it was written, they probably weren't really used regularly as a residence. They probably weren't even being really thought of as a residence eight to 10 years ago.
I'm sure, I mean, whenever I was working in Charleston, I'd see, you know, however how they stack them, eight or nine, and somebody got the idea one day, wow, that's really strong. I could probably make a house
That's fairly reasonable. So they probably didn't think about putting that in the ordinance at that time.
Sure, sure.
As far as I'm aware, we don't really have that language in the ordinance prohibiting that. We just always relied on
The point is, the engineering and the development of it has come a really long way. And the speaker that stood up tonight is quite right. I mean, they're some of the most beautiful architectural houses you'll see if they're done the right way. So the amendment, as I read it, would encourage using it as a storage structure, a storage unit, in effect, but prohibits you from using it as a principal structure, which is allowed under the code right now. So I think while it's very well intended, it's still quite confusing. And, you know, we, no pun intended, but I think we're ships passing on some of this stuff where we're trying to allow shipping containers but unintentionally restricting it being used as a principal. And for that reason, I probably can't support it tonight. I didn't get the clarification I was seeking.
Okay, it's Mr. Gardner's turn.
You know, I think as of right now, you can't have shipping containers. Is that right? As of today, you cannot have them. Is that correct? I don't know if that would override what Mr. Conell was saying about
As an accessory building.
Well, right now, you can't have them, period. So I don't think that would apply to a primary structure either. But that's neither here nor there. I don't agree necessarily with this. I am willing to vote this along tonight because, number one, it will allow you to use shipping containers, and it will allow more discussion further down the road. That's why I will vote to move this forward because as of right now, if you have shipping containers, you're in violation of the law. So I'm going to vote for this to move it forward so that, at least, it will allow you, though there are some restrictions on it, it will allow you to have them. And then we'll see what Mr. Jones presents or whatever amendments come down the road. But I will move this forward because it will allow us to have those shipping containers for use, whether primary or accessory or whatever. So, because right now, it is, if you have them, you're in violation of the law as it stands, as I understand it.
Yeah, just to hear from everyone, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my colleagues. I'm of the opinion as Mr. Gardner just stated, of trying to get this back to the agenda and moving it down the road. I do have some issues, Mr. Conley, with this. One being, I think this is a written ordinance with good intention but bad results. I'm just being honest. It's just, you wasn't even here in 2010, so no pun intended on you. I may be a Democrat sitting up here, but I still believe in people's liberties and rights. And, but, I also want to have conversation with you and Mr. Carpenter in reference to how many complaints did we have? Did we take one or two complaints, which is the minority, and create it something that we did not need to create it in 2010? How many people now are in violation? And what I mean by that, that, you know, I know that the ordinance is in place, but if we pass this as we've gotten it now, how many people we're going to affect where they're not going to be grandfathered in and they're going to be put in a bad situation? Those things I'm very conscious and aware of, and I don't want to create. And I say that with all good intent. So what I'm asking my colleagues tonight to do, bring back your amendments and let's set out. I think Mr. Jones has a good idea. I don't know if I would go to the exact stream where he's at, but I don't want to interfere with people's rights on their property to the degree. Now, if we've got an issue or a serious problem out there, then we need to address it. But, you know, people don't change the speed limit just because one or two people think it's dangerous on that road. It takes a vast majority. And I don't want to get this government into tweaking things for the minority few, very few, and hurting the majority who doesn't have an issue and abide by the regulations and ordinance we have on the book.
Yeah, what I'm hearing from all of you is a further consideration of this document. We're trying to relax the regulation. Let me offer this for discussion, just to keep it moving. We've agreed to come back here on the 12th and address this. Should we have a work session? Because it's fairly complex, as Mr. Webb showed it, 300 pages. But in this case, we want to stay focused on the issue that Mr. Bozard has brought. Would you guys agree to a brief working session? Comments, Mr. Jones?
I just want to kind of go back to a couple of things that were just mentioned. When, this is what concerns me. When I have my colleagues who say these were good intentions but bad results, but yet they're still going to vote on first reading, that concerns me. We don't need to move this along. I think this is very convoluted, very confusing. Deep regulation, I think is going to cause us more problems than not. And as I said, I want to present an ordinance, and I think you would have to go back forward to planning and zoning. Am I correct on that, Mr. Bozard, not to repeal prohibition against shipping containers?
Mr. Bozard asked me if, I believe, if you could have section one and not section two. I believe that's what you asked me, didn't you, Mr. Bozard? Mr. Bozard asked me the question, could you enact section one and not enact section two? Did you not ask that question? And answer that, Mr. Bozard is, and Mr. Jones. If you enact section one but don't enact section two, then shipping containers would be used as an accessory building, accessory structure and use in Kershaw County, just like any other accessory structure and use. Isn't that correct? With no other restrictions?
Yes, sir. From my understanding, I'd rather like to read the language, but sure.
And I agree with you. I'd like to see the actual language. But Mr. Bozard queried that, and his answer to that was, yes, Mr. Bozard, if you enact section one and not section two, then shipping containers would be accessory structures and uses. Period.
To finish, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Just to finish. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. 2010, one of the speakers got up and held up a thick book, a thick page of regulations, and that one sentence or a couple of sentences were in there. Well, bottom line is, I voted against that entire package because I thought that was absolutely overregulating with that 2010 whatever comprehensive plan. So I didn't support it then, and I certainly don't support this now. This is not complicated. We just repeal the prohibition against shipping containers. Mr. Chairman, let the people
Yes, sir, Mr. Tucker.
Enjoy their property.
Two quick things.
And wait a minute.
I'm sorry, you're still talking? Go ahead, please.
I'm through now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker.
If you want to do a work session, can we have this where we can maybe extend some of this retreat time coming up? We meet before we have our next council meeting. This is, as one of my members has said, very convoluted, and I think it needs more time. And what I would like to do now is call the questions so we can move down this agenda, and then we can have further discussion in our work session.
For that, we'll call the question. Can we move now to a vote? All right, all those in favor of the amendment which strikes the language, shipping, the use of mobile or manufacturing shipping containers or similar structures as accessory buildings shall not be permitted in any zoning district. Scratching shipping containers, all those voting, and that on the first reading, vote and signify by raising your hand. We have myself, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass in favor on the first reading. All those opposed on the first reading. Mr. Jones and Mr. Conell, the motion passes and moves to a second reading. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is new business, which is the administrator's contract. It's at tab C. And on the board, I'll introduce it because it's the administrator's item. You'll notice in there, we have made some correcting language on tab C. Let me turn to that very quickly. And at the salary location, in paragraph four, on page one of three, it strikes 158, it strikes the previous number and reflects the pay rise voted in December of 2.5%. We move to page two, and there are no corrections. We move to page three.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, item six.
Yes, of course. Thank you very much. Where is that, Mr. Tucker?
On the term of contract, the year. Six.
Six, yep. On page two, it extends it for, out to the period of two years, to 31 December 2020. Went right by that. And on the last page, it corrects the date of signing and execution. With that, can we have a motion, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we approve this contract for the Kershaw County Administrator, Vic Carpenter.
Second, please. Second from Mr. Bozard, discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tucker, will he off?
I thought we were skipping this until we came out
That's where I'm going.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my mistake.
So I didn't want to cut you off, but yes, sir.
Withdraw that.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Withdraw your motion. Move to item number two. Fire service solutions and accomplishments. This will be of no vote, tab D. You have a number of read aheads, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, 2018, an ad hoc committee was established to review fire service in Kershaw County and to come back with some conclusions and recommendations. When the staff and the various committee, subcommittee meetings were done, there were several recommendations and conclusions that were presented to council. This is back toward the end of last year. We are now coming, at the request of council, back with a final conclusion to recommendations to present to council. It is the intention to present those and then open the discussion for the next several weeks and months as we go into planning and goal setting and the budget itself. Scott Wiles will be the presenter of the information to the council tonight. And as he comes up, you have And as he comes up, you have also, in addition to the presentation that he'll be going over on the screen, you also have in your packets and was presented in front of you addendums that are substantiating information. They do not change anything. They are just the drill down data that were used in many cases to come up with conclusions and recommendations.
Okay, very good. So no voters required, and we'll give them feedback and then have a subsequent session on this. Please, Chris.
Good evening, council. I got my professional clicker over here, he's going to help me. Like Mr. Carpenter said, we've put this together. These are some of the recommendations and stuff we had back in August 1st of September. And these are some things we've worked towards and where we're at at this point. Many recommendations, these are the eight items here at the top. These were the big ones that we went over, or that kept getting brought up and brought up and brought up. So we're going to go over these eight items here as we go through. All right, divide the county into districts. It kept being brought up. So on September 10th, 2018, the county fire service divided into four districts. The next slide here is the map, basically shows your outlines. No district lines were messed around with or anything like that. We just kind of condensed those individual stations into a district, kind of tightened it up, get us where we are so we can get tighter numbers and see where the call volumes and where our services are needed and stuff. Restructure county fire service ranks from top to bottom. Fire marshal is now the chief, deputy fire marshal is the deputy chief. Chiefs are no longer in the stations, it is captain. He oversees the station operations, his personnel and his equipment. In the book there, you've got Attachment 1 goes over the qualifications for those officers from the captain down to the support firefighter. Also includes classes they're required to have and so on. Number three, the training standards countywide. Training schedule will be finalized January 31st. It's actually on my desk right now. We're trying to get it finalized and get it out there. We've got a meeting on the 28th. But getting it together, and that all pertains to ISO, which is Insurance Service Office, National Fire Protection Association, Occupational Safety and Health Administration. Along with county fire service, Lugoff Fire and Camden Fire, last year, we jointly come together to try to get more fire academy classes brought in to Kershaw County for our volunteers. Attachment 2, that's a list of fire academy classes that were brought in last year. Like I said, between us, Lugoff Fire and Camden Fire, we got those classes brought in here and had instructors teach us.
It includes ATech as well.
ATech's kind of its own thing, but we did, between those three organizations, we did help ATech out, teach classes with their live burn, test out, and other things involved with that. Number four, standard operating guidelines. January 1, updated, issued the standard operating guidelines to all members. Previously, we would print out a copy for everybody and go on and on and on. It is now inside our emergency reporting in the library to where everybody has a digital copy, and it can be updated when it needs to be. Five, restructure 1% funds. 1% committee has been formed. It consists of three volunteers and then myself and Kristi. For the volunteers, they're going to be serving a two-year term. So after two years, we'll get three more volunteers from outside the county, come in, and we'll continue doing what we're doing. Purpose of the budget, 1% budget.
Quick question, are those staggered terms or continuity?
No, we're just being as small as we are, the three, and then I'll go into three more. Figure it'd be easiest. That way I don't have, I don't want to get into, well, nobody's representing my area. Nobody's representing my area for this 1%. Comes from the State Fire Association.
Yeah, for example, first term would be one year for some people, and in others it would be two years, so that you have continuity.
Yeah, very good possibility we do it like that. It's nothing but changing stuff around.
Yeah, let's look at that one. Thank you.
And of course, Attachment 3 in there, that is basically the 1%. It's through our firefighter association. It's from the insurance service offices where we get a little money back for doing what we're supposed to do, our training, trucks up to date and stuff. That kind of goes through the guidelines, rules and regulations, what we can and can't do with that money. Number six, develop new plan for recruitment and retention. This was a big one. It kept getting brought up. Develop recommendations for volunteer point pay increase in the 2019-2020 budget. Continue the supplemental workman's comp. Also recommended changes through our 1% fund to help the recruitment and retention. The Act of 911 for all firefighters, supplemental retirement plan, and specialty training, which the specialty training does not involve anything through the South Carolina Fire Academy.
Yes, sir.
Recommended changes to the 19 and 20 budget. Will that be then presented to us or are these subject to a work session? I'm just trying to schedule this body to take this on.
That particular one right there was actually put in for the 2019-2020 budget that's going to be presented.
Okay, guys?
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Number seven there, standardizes the equipment list for, to get everybody on the same page. We utilized the ISO, which is Insurance Service Office, their equipment list that we need to have on these trucks at these stations to get our ISO rating. So as nozzles, hand tools and hose goes out, the proper stuff we put in place, and we'll continue with that list so we can keep a better, keep our ISO rating and eventually go from there. All right, number eight, reporting software. Computers have been purchased and they're installed at all my 12 main stations. So every main station has a brand-new computer. It is in rotation with IT in Kershaw County, so they need maintenance, they go out, they'll be taken care of through there. Emails are also put in place at these stations to do away with the fax lines. Yes, sir.
Fire department up on Lugoff side of the lake, is it all equipped with everything except manpower, right?
Yes. As far as the computer and stuff too?
Yes.
No, the computer is only at the main stations.
Okay.
Substation of Pine Grove.
Any plans to put anything up there? Risk of getting it stole probably?
Those are no more than what we can do right now. We always, especially up that way for volunteers, it's very hard to get somebody up there.
Do we have anybody going up there and staying on the weekend and stuff like that?
No, sir. All right, from this reporting software, data collected that we've gotten so far. All right, this is kind of the breakdown we're going to go, starting off with the breakdown of incident types. These are all sitting on your slides, so we'll go over these one by one and go from there. Breakdown, these reports also, this is what I turn into Mr. Templar every month. I turn these in, so he sees these quite frequently, so he's with me on them. Basically, this is a breakdown for the whole county here. I can break it down further, which you'll see in some of your attachments there, it actually breaks it down into districts, into the stations. Just goes over the type of calls that we've responded to. So you can see right there, the rescue emergency medical service one, that's basically our first responders and includes motor vehicle accidents and stuff like that. That's our, that's our big call taker. Further breakdown was on Attachment 4. This one here goes into the districts. District map I showed you earlier, District 1, 2, 3 and 4. This also has Camden, Lugoff and other, which other meaning outside the county. These are times that they've called for us, and it breaks it down even further right there, your district, District 1, Blaney, Pine Grove and W Mill, they're the frontrunner. And of course, the outside, you like Lee County, whoever, call for mutual aid. All right, so we're going to break it down even further. This breaks it down into the individual station in that area, from Antioch all the way to Buffalo. The headquarters down there, that one's like, throws you off a little bit. That's just times that myself or Keith have been tied to a report, and it shows that we were out there. Okay? All right. One of the other ones I found is good information for us, hour of the day, when these calls happen, what part of the day? And one I want to point out to you there, between that 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock timeframe, I don't know if it's everybody trying to get back from lunch, trying to get an extra couple of minutes or what, but call volume jumps. It just gives you an idea of our timeframe throughout the day, about 24-hour period, where the call volume is.
We don't have these charts, do we?
No.
Yeah.
These charts are very useful. I can get those charts. All right, this one here, basically breaks down that one you just saw, the hours a day. Now it puts in average personnel. How many personnel do you get for that hour a day on these particular calls? And you can see our numbers where they range out there, from anywhere from the lowest one on there, I see is 1.88 to a total of 3.63, I do believe is the highest one. Or 3.86. So that just gives you an average person, that's for the whole county, for all the calls that we had from this timeframe, the 319 to 1231, 1,349 calls. All right, this is just another part of the report that'll break it down even further for us on some times. Of course, top up there, you can see first responder rescue calls, fire calls, then you get into the dispatch to arrival. That's from the time the dispatch hits the tone to the first truck or personnel gets on scene and tags on the radio. And then the next section there is the dispatch to en route time. That's the time from the dispatch till somebody goes en route or they get a truck to get en
You spent a lot of time during that EMS discussion on response times. Is there a standard?
Yes, sir. Based on our area right now, it's based off the NFPA 1720. And from what we have, it's for 500 citizens or 500 people in a square mile, I'm required, they want you to shoot for a standard of six firefighters on scene within 14 minutes.
14 minutes and six firefighters.
Six firefighters, that's certified firefighters. That's not just everybody showing up, all right, cool, we're here. Six firefighters.
I guess we'll eventually get to how many times have we met that standard and how many we didn't.
Very, very few.
That was a.
If any.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Chief Wiles and Fire Marshal Ray, thank you so much for everything. Look, you guys do so much with so little, no question about it. However, I'm concerned about Mr. Kato. Coming here, he poured his heart out, he presented some information to us about his area of the county. And you've done everything so far, reorganizing within the parameters of your, of the fire districts, you know, in Kershaw County. Let me ask you this, how would you address his situation currently?
We're going to get to that in just a minute.
Wonderful. And would you make sure we point that out?
Yes, sir. And I mean, as of right now, to go along with that, just a brief thing.
Because, let me say this too, one commitment that we made, and I know Mr. Connell and Mr. Carter remember this, that if we were going to do anything extreme with personnel or funding, we were going to do a question, a referendum question, and take it to the people and present it to them. So I just wanted to bring that up. Go ahead.
All right, conclusions are data. Conclusion 1, we need to continue improving our recruitment and retention for volunteers. That's still, as of this moment, that's 100% of what we depend on. So this one, sure, response times, the number of firefighters responding to rural incidents, stay within that NFPA recommendation, which was at NFPA 1720. Despite adding paid firemen, volunteers are still the crucial component of what we do. Yes, sir. Recommendation for volunteer recruitment, as I said earlier, the 2019 to 2020 budget requests an increase for the points paid from $75,000 to $100,000. 1% funds drafted, budgets will include supplemental retirement, specialty training, Act of 911. Increased volunteer recruitment efforts through station signage, signs throughout different stations, also county electronic signs. Got several that we've put up over the last couple of years periodically. Let's figure something up, throw on there. And also social media. Research for possible grants for recruitment and retention. That's getting into another realm. There's some stuff out there for that, we just haven't tapped into it yet. Conclusion 2, adding full-time firefighters.
Let me go back.
Yes, sir.
Sammy and I ran into a guy who had experience in North Carolina, remember?
Yes, sir, I do.
And in North Carolina, some of the counties permit waiving fees and things of that nature. Is that one of the options as an incentive, as an offset?
The only incentive as of right now that the state offers, we don't do any conference, they offer a VFP program. Basically, they have to meet a certain amount of training hours, a certain amount of call volume. And they only get a $3,000 tax credit towards them for the whole year.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the council can offer, any council imposed fees, the council could then elect.
Yeah, I remember we discussed that, Keith, about two weeks ago, right? And can we also ask you guys to bring that forward, some fees that might be waived that we as a county impose? It won't be a lot of money, but it would be an incentive, and it shows a signal of our recognition of their service.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can you expand upon on fees or everybody who wasn't in our conversation, understand what you're talking about, please?
Well, I really asked you all to come back with some ideas of how we might, without, on a revenue neutral approach, have some fees waived for those who are volunteers and maybe even full-time manning, to increase incentive for them to volunteer. Now, I don't know what those, that full list of fees that we have as a county, but they're all in the budget, and you could take a look at those. That's, I think there's some road fees and other fees of that nature. This is not waiving taxes, this is waiving fees. Can you kindly look at that and come back with some ideas? I'm asking you to expand the domain of what we can do here, all right? Would you think about that? Thank you. Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
That 1% fee that comes back from the state, how much money is involved in that?
Usually when they send it over here, the state sends it, then sends it to Kershaw County as a whole. Then therefore Camden gets their cut out of it, Lugoff gets their cut out of it, and then the rest of it.
I'm talking about just our fire service.
Just our, Kershaw County's fee, after our dues and everything are paid for all our firemen, I think it's roughly $68,000.
How much? And there's only three things that can be used for, right?
It's very limited of what we could use it for.
Yeah, retirement and.
Retirement's one of the big things.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tucker, sir.
Let me, I want, and I know what you charged the administrator with, but I want to go a little step further because I want all kind of ideas. In that conversation was also, they did talk about some property tax relief, like we give our veterans now and homesteads. So I don't want to leave that out, if it's going to be a new wave of attracting, because this training is so intense and takes away from people's 40-hour a week job, that we have to find new ways to recruit and retain these folks. And I think that we might be on the cutting edge of doing something different in South Carolina and Kershaw County than any of the other 45 counties are doing. And this individual is from North Carolina, as the chairman said, so let's explore it.
And council, it is going to be on the agenda, the planning retreat, as well, we've got an hour set aside to discuss this again, as well as getting into budget work session.
Good, good.
So there's a whole lot of time to go over these issues and get them resolved.
Yeah, as I said, it's a purpose here, is these seven gentlemen, understand what your issues are, and then you hear back from us. I think that's happening. Please, go ahead.
All right, conclusion 2, adding the full-time firefighters to the two phases. That has concluded low number of firefighters and response times exceed the standards. Y'all heard our story earlier, that's what we're dealing with, hiring full-time firefighters to begin coverage for citizens of Kershaw County. One is to lower the response time and move towards meeting the NFPA 1720 for adequate personnel to respond to six certified firefighters within 14 minutes. This is for a rural area of less than 500 citizens per square mile. So those are the standards we're trying to push towards.
Those standards, excuse me, Deputy Chief, those standards would require six additional new firemen. No, you'd be able to work it within your. No, you, you, or you'd be able to work it within your confines of your budget?
With, if I may.
Sure.
Standards he's referring to would require at least six respond to the call. Currently, we're not meeting that standard. Recommendations will give some on adding full-time that would allow us towards meeting it. Not, we can't rearrange our existing structure and meet these standards, because we're not meeting the standards currently. So his standards are national standards that we're not meeting with our current structure.
How many paid do you have right now?
I'm slotted for eight part-time guys.
You got, you have got eight part-time?
All eight, those eight slots, those are made up of full-time firemen. So they work twenty-four, forty-eight, somewhere else. And they come here and pull eight hours to work for the citizens of Kershaw County. And some days, today for instance, I only had two that were available to work. Rest of them were on shift or working overtime for their, their paid careers.
And even then, they're covering two or three stations at a time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
As he said, y'all heard earlier, I had a guy from Shepherd and the other one is Charlotte Thompson. He just had to be in here grabbing some materials from the office today, and we sent both of them that way.
Thank God.
Wow. We can't afford to rely on a policy that relies on luck. When Mr. Cato's barn's on fire, right?
House.
House. No, this was a turkey barn.
Turkey barn.
Oh, okay.
Same thing.
Yeah, that's a house. They live there.
Okay.
All right, recommended, recommended solutions. This is where we get talking into the bread and butter of this. Twenty-four hours with our station over in Blaney. I've got room and air. Of course, there's gonna be some other things that come along with this. And we're not, also, we'll also be having our part-time positions still available to help back fill these and add where we need to. The three shift supervisors, just to give you kind of a comparison, EMS's shift supervisors, they run the whole county. They take care of the manpower, staffing needs throughout the day, and they kind of take that load off of myself and Mr. Ray, plus some other things they can do. The six firefighters, that's two firefighters per shift, twenty-four hour shift, that's they work twenty-four hours, they'd be off for forty-eight. There's holidays and all that stuff involved in there also. Just those six for right now, this is what's gonna cost us, and those six would be strictly twenty-four hour at the Blaney station. The four firefighters you see up there would work in pairs Monday through Friday, eight to five. And I would use them as pairs to roam districts on the east side, along with a couple spots for the part-time positions that Monday through Friday.
So we would have four full-time firefighters east of the river during the daylight hours, which is running back to the chart, was when we had the greatest need for people on duty. And then we would have twenty-four hour firefighters in the Blaney station, along with part-timers rolling back them up.
For additional eight hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
So that'd be additional eight hundred thousand?
Yes, yes. This is additional to what our current budget is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and that in itself is what we said, we would put a referendum question together and go out. So that's perfect. I mean, to take that to the people. And it may be a special election, and we could do that.
Mr. Chairman? One point I wanted to draw out is, I think this is a very reasonable approach to a, a need that is national. It's not just Kershaw County where growth in certain areas is outpacing fire service needs. It's all over the place. Particularly as the training requirements get up to two hundred hours or plus, is that what it is now?
Just to go, to get to a firefighter, one, just firefighter. That's not counting driving trucks or anything else. It's two hundred and forty hours.
If you're trying to get David or myself who have kids and are younger and gonna be the next generation of firefighters, how are they gonna take two hundred plus hours throughout a year and provide for their family unless they have some type of incentives? So it's not that, also, the fire mill is important here. Even if we wanted to, and we said, hey, we're gonna raise the fire mill to the maximum amount, that means the fire-related tax, the maximum amount. I think by law, the most we could raise it would be sixty-six thousand dollars. I think that's what we looked at last year. Is that right?
Stat three eighty-eight, it's like point zero four, eight, five or something.
So the most we could do is sixty-six thousand dollars. That doesn't even pay for really one fireman, including benefits and everything. So that, you know, we may have to have the backbone to actually say, we're gonna look at the fire mill and try to take care of the volunteers with some of the more proper reimbursements and recruitment stuff, and then send it to the voters, as Mr. Jones has said, because we can't do anything else.
Correct.
Because if the fire mill is raised to the max and it's only sixty-six thousand dollars, that doesn't give us one fireman. And you've set a plan up that shows we have a significant need based on call volume, the actual data. And so I just wanted to draw that out and say, you know, we couldn't raise taxes legally to, to even come near covering this. So the voters are gonna have to decide whether they want it applied to a house or a car, or, you know, how they want to pay for it, one, if they want to. And then, two, how much they value having their call responded to whenever something catches on fire, for example. And you've, you've heard some comments tonight that I think would suggest we want to make the investment.
What's the value of the fire mill now?
It was, um, I wanna say it's about a hundred and ten thousand.
Close to the school districts?
Yeah, yes, sir.
No, no, not the mill, but the value of it. Yeah, right. That's what I was asking.
So potentially you could, you could be looking close to eight to ten mills.
Absolutely.
That would be for the people.
Yep.
Mandated.
All right, and this just, this one here shows with the twenty-four hours, which, like I said, where we're at, yeah, you're just shy of a million dollars. Yeah, the, the top section there is just salaries. The second section is gear, uniforms, radios, cell phones, pickup truck for that supervisors to be moving around with.
Some of that would be periodically reoccurring.
Yeah, the, the bottom one, yes. A set of gear is rated for ten years.
Okay.
So ten years, they're interior certified, it's got to go, I gotta put them in something new. Uniforms, you're looking at, at a yearly thing. That pickup truck, that could go for five years, it could go for ten years. It just depends.
How rough they are?
Yeah. And of course handhelds, we're, we're learning some new things about that, so I'm hoping that this is gonna be our last one. At least it is. He keeps telling me that R-word, so.
He's not going anywhere.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you. As you can see, that's total there. This is an altered solution that I came up with. This strictly goes more along, both of them are that hub and spoke concept that we keep talking about. This one here strictly goes with the eight to five, Monday through Friday. The two supervisors during the day, one for each side of the river, and the eight firemen to kind of split up and use how we need them wherever the call volume's at. Same concept here, top part of it's salary, bottom part of it there's implementation of gear, uniform and stuff like that. A total of seven hundred and seventy-four, almost, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And the only thing is that's cheaper. That's, that's a cheaper solution. You don't have twenty-four hour coverage anywhere in the county.
It would be pretty, pretty much just building off of what we have right now, and it'd be unlike where we got now with part-time. They might be here, they might have to work something. This is permanently put some in that position.
Mr. Chairman, if we may, I think we have a wonderful opportunity here with our retreat coming up February the second, I believe. We could actually set a goal for ourselves to come out of there with a decision of where we're gonna go.
Exactly. That's the whole idea.
No more, correct.
Good for you. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Uh, David?
You can go back.
Well, and, and you may, you may, you may are preparing to cover this, but if we talked about upgrades to like actual stations, I know in my district, the Antioch Station, you know, needs, needs repair and it needs a lot of work, so.
That's, I'll come up here and set the second phase part.
Go ahead, Danny.
All right, secondary phase, basically, this, we're not gonna do this all in one time and be happy, here we go. With that recommended, recommended solution, the second phase, we're gonna look at the twenty-four hour daylight shift, increasing the firefighters at Blaney, starting off there. We know that's where the growth's at. But also reviewing the call volume east side, determination and location of a twenty-four hour station on the east side and start putting in guys like that. And yes, with station renovations and stuff like that, we're getting bombarded with them. They were built back in seventy-four, correct me if I'm wrong. So a lot of, been through a lot of hurricanes, and most of them were block buildings and been added on to over the years. So that's something that we'd have to consider moving forward, is just like we do with our trucks. Every so often being able to replace one here and there. With alternate solution up there, the hub and spoke, you're at, increasing your daylight positions. And we could even take it up to seven days a week, but it'd still be that daylight, eight to five. It's just a different option to look at. Leave this map on the next one there. Yes, this, this is based off the twenty-third division plan, it's actually twenty-twenty population density projections. And you see where the population's moving. The Blaney, Blaney area is booming. It's starting to come over from Richmond County, but you can see it's starting to, we're projecting it to go towards Antioch Shepherd area also, along with Pine Grove and Dove's Mill. So we can be moving people where we need to. But as those numbers go up, that population density goes up, it changes what we need to be shooting for on getting guys on scene. Seventeen twenty, I believe, once it gets above five hundred, it changes from six firefighters in fourteen minutes to twelve firefighters within ten minutes. So I mean, as the population grows, the standards start changing, so.
All right, very good.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
What a great, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to the committee again, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Conell, Mr. Jones. Especially thanks to staff and these two gentlemen here for such a good job of getting back with us and giving us some numbers. And I look forward to some of these solutions and creative ideas.
Okay. Other guys, other comments? That was great. I echo what Mr. Tucker said to Mr. Gardner and Mr. Conell and Mr. Jones about getting the data. Wow. That informs us wonderfully. Let's move now to item number three, which is a Health Services District Board Appointment at Tab E. I'll introduce it. We have a vacancy that developed with the departure of Karen Eckford. We've had before us in the last meeting, the name of Kathleen, Catherine Canty, also endorsed by the members of the Kershaw Health Services District. And we look to have her nominated. Do we, can we have a nomination for Ms. Canty?
So move.
Mr. Jones is second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Tucker.
That was Mr. Snodgrass.
Uh, that's Snodgrass?
Yes.
Okay, you guys look so alike. Can we have any discussion, Mr. Jones or anybody?
No discussion. I think you cleared it up pretty well.
Yeah.
What'd you say her name was?
Uh, Ms. Canty, Catherine Canty. Her husband is, owns the foundation specialists in town, and she is quite active in the, in the county and all over the place, so. I've talked to her about it, and she's more than willing to take it, and Daryl Ogbon, the chairman, recommends her.
This is the snow cone man's wife, right?
No, this is.
Okay, that's a sister law.
Other comments? Okay, we move quickly to vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous, and Ms. Canty is now on the Health Services District Board Appointment. I will point out to you that maybe other movement there, I've been talked to by at least one other that may pull off, so I ask you to keep your eye on that. Very important board that helps us out so much. Item number four is a discussion regarding Patriot's Landing at Tab F. I'll introduce it, and then no vote is needed here, but we may come away with an opinion for a letter, right, Mr. Jones?
Correct.
So it's been, as you walk around, all of us got, we've had six months, six weeks of incredible rain, ten inches in December alone. And upstream in the watershed, it continues to have a problem with water that comes down through ten different dams above us. And occasionally, we've had to close down the Patriot Landing. We've gotten numerous protests from hunters and fishermen and people that just like to be on the, on the river. And so I thought it would be appropriate in discussing with Mr. Jones and others that we review the policy and we also perhaps address it certainly, what I view to be a hazard with a dock that is downstream of the loading dock, which causes equipment to include trailers and boats to go underneath and swept by the current underneath the dock itself. So with that open for a discussion, I'd certainly go to Mr. Jones, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is pretty cut and dry from my viewpoint. I've received many complaints. When the landing was built, the pier was put there, the dock was put there, there was supposed to be a break to keep the current from going up under the dock.
Absolutely.
Well, that was taken out due to money, obviously, but it was in there. They had it budgeted, but they took it out of state for some reason, whatever. Our responsibility of that is that we, we volunteered to go down there to keep it up to date if, I guess, potholes or whatever. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
What I would like to see, and what I, and you and I've had this discussion, I'd like to ask the chairman to write a letter on behalf of Kershaw County Council demanding the state to go and do what they did not do. Somebody's gonna die, somebody's gonna get killed at that landing. I've seen boats go under. We've, I, I was kayaking and we sort of had a race and I was winning. And we got down to that section and someone's boat just went right up under the dock. We had to jump out and help him pull it. Of course, he almost went up under the dock as well. And when the water is high, it's actually safer to put your boat in than when it's down to normal levels. So that would be my request, Mr. Chairman, if there's no opposition. I'm not asking for a vote, just if there's no opposition verbally, that you write a letter on behalf of us.
Uh, Mr. Tucker?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, quick question, because I thought we've already always had a great report with the state. Just nothing that we've addressed, Mr. Carpenter, already? Maybe with DNR, I know the, the, the local, DNR guy is a, is a local young man here. Matter of fact, he lives right up the street here. That probably guided us in the right direction and along with DOT. And I mean, have we exhausted all those leads is my question.
Mr. Tucker, up, really, as the chairman said, up until our recent levels of rain, we haven't had too many issues where the landing was closed or anything. It's recently, it's been closed a lot, and that's kind of drawing attention to it. As far as I'm aware, our relationship with DNR is strong. It's good. So I can't imagine that they would be at all unwilling to want us in the right direction or certainly consider a request. We haven't made one. So having, upon making a request, I'm sure that they would take it and enact upon it in some fashion.
I just didn't want to get into a, a letter, not saying the chairman would write a bad letter, but, you know, let it be misinterpreted. Let's use those words. And then we, we've got ill feelings going back versus having maybe a conversation or a meeting, because it's hard to ask someone to fix something that they're not aware of that is a problem.
Yeah. Mr. Jones?
Uh, first off, they're, they are aware. And second off, I was gonna write a letter myself, and I was gonna put it, hit it, hit the head straight on. This is dangerous. Somebody's gonna die. And I'm just saying that even though we don't have any responsibility of that, that the chairman send a letter. Well, the chairman and I talked, and I just felt it may be better coming from the chairman representing the whole council instead of me sending it by myself. But if we don't do that, I am gonna send one.
Well, we, we all can write our own individual letters. I, I, I just don't want to start off on the wrong foot. That is, that is my indication of how bad conversations turn to no conversations because we don't have good conversation from the start. And so, you know, we're all up here, elected bodies, elected individuals for one body that can write a letter anytime we want to. I just want to be cautious on what we say in that letter if we're asking council to, to, to be supportive of the letter of the chairman writing one. And that we do make sure that we communicate clearly with them on what the problems are. Now, you may say that they're notified and they know, and I'm not doubting you on that, but does the right people know? Have we talked to the right folks?
And let, let me just say this too. The chairman on our behalf writes the letter. He, he's, he, I have not known him yet to not share that information with us before it's sent out. He's always been very good about that.
I'd, I'd be happy to, to write one and, and take your edits, sir.
I think Mr. Tucker is just suggesting that we extend, the letter extends the olive branch to, to, to begin.
Yeah, well, okay, well.
Thank you, Rev.
Yeah, thank you, Reverend.
Mine was not an olive branch.
I think, I think we get a consensus that we have a problem, and we will work collaboratively with DNR and others to get it done. All right, and I'll share with you the draft. I can write it tonight. With that, I think we move to council briefings and led by Mr. Bozard. Thank you, Danny. Thank you very much.
Nothing.
Uh, nothing from Mr. Bozard. Mr. Conell?
If you felt a slight rumbling in the earth, Lugoff and Camden are wrestling.
If you felt a slight rumbling in the earth, Lou golf and Camden are wrestling probably right now, and I'm just itching to get over there.
Yeah, me too. Well, I wanna see that one.
Nothing to report, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I think we have a good, and we've had a good season so far with both teams, too. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Just a couple of things right quickly. One, I just wanna say that one of my very best friends is here tonight, Austin Branham. Thank you for coming. You can stand up. Austin and I go to lunch about once a month together, and he doesn't let me forget it. And his beautiful mom and, and wonderful, I won't say beautiful dad, but then Stacy Branham, they allow him to spend some time with me. And let me just say this, Austin Branham helps me be a better person. Thank you, Austin. I really appreciate your friendship.
And he's got a bowtie.
And he has a bowtie.
That's right.
Now, let me just say, let me, let me move on. I have just one other thing. At the Economic Development Summit that was organized by the Kershaw County Economic Development Office, I stated the fact that Kershaw County has not been successful in getting new industries and industrial economic development. An economic development expert spoke at the summit, and I asked, why hasn't Kershaw County been successful in getting new industries and industrial expansions? I asked the economic development expert, what can Kershaw County expect to get in 2019 in industrial development? The economic development expert, who was paid four thousand five hundred dollars to give a one-hour talk on how Kershaw County measures up, could not provide concrete numbers in my response to my question of why Kershaw County has not been successful over the past ten years in economic development, or new economic development. Folks, we need answers, and I am requesting that the administrator make a report to me and Kershaw County Council of what Kershaw County can expect in 2019 as new industries locating here. At the Economic Development Summit, we heard that we had many site-ready industrial parks and a mega site, and that the Department of Commerce and the electric co-ops are actively and aggressively marketing our sites nationally and internationally. I also request that the county council set goals and expectations for the new industrial investment numbers and new jobs for 2019, so the citizens will know what results they can expect for the four million dollars in Economic Development Office budget for the past four years, and up to thirty-one million dollars committed in a seventeen-point-two million-dollar bond for economic development from, from the taxpayers, which was enacted by county council in 2015. I am committed to economic development, which is essential for jobs and our tax base. Over the past year, I have pushed for transparency and provided transparency as to the cost of economic development to the taxpayers and a lack of effective economic development. Folks, that is a fact. We now need accountability to the taxpayers as to results and cost. Huge spending on economic development requires results, which we can have through redirecting our efforts. What we're doing is not working. Let's market our great site-ready industrial sites and our unique mega site and recommend by the taxpayers, I mean, by the, that was recommended by the experts at the Economic Development Summit through the South Carolina Department of Commerce and the electric co-ops developing the mega site is the top priority, as we heard at the summit. And if I may say that I have, over the past six or seven months, entertained y'all with my comments on economic development, I've always concluded with, when something happens, it's gonna be the mega site through the Department of Commerce. And also, I think the expert mentioned something about fifteen-acre sites would be good. Well, we've got plenty of those. We've got maybe one over in Heritage. We've got a couple, maybe one or two in Steeple. But I think we, at the Governor's Hill site, we have a few more. But there are things we can do, and I'm looking forward to discussing this goal setting with our administrator at the retreat on February the second. Now, one second. Mr. Chairman, members of county council, thank you for the time.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Snodgrass, sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of county council, just a couple of things that I wanted to note. And first of all, ironically, Penry is here talking about Food for the Soul, and it was already in my notes to mention, you know, with the weather the way it has been, I'm reminded of just how blessed those of us are who have a roof over our heads, but also blessed that we live in a community that has organizations like Food for the Soul. They had eleven sleeping there last night and had as high as twenty-two last week. So I just, I just thought it was important just to, to mention those resources that we do have in our community. Also, I wanted to just kind of expand upon my vote on the ordinance. I explained earlier that, you know, I believe that county government is the best form of government because it is the most local and is the closest to the people. If, if we don't get it right, it's very easy for us to, to kind of turn the screwdriver and then tap of the hammer and, and make those corrections. And I, I believe that my vote was a vote to move us forward in the path of deregulating that. I don't believe everything that was in that ordinance was perfect, but I do believe it moved us forward to, to deregulating that. So wanted to, wanted to share that. I want to thank county staff who continue to work with me on, on some constituent issues. So thank you, guys, executive staff. You guys continue to amaze me with your responsiveness. And then lastly, yesterday, I, I attended a service in the honor of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and as a pastor myself, I look at his life and I admire a man of faith who got involved in the public square. And as I was at that service, I was reminded of just how important it is for us to, to see the world through someone else's eyes, to, to take a step back. And when we get so zealous about issues, when we get so, we get so passionate about things that concern us, there's certainly nothing wrong with that, but I would just encourage us to, to be mindful, to, to see, to see life through someone else's eyes, to, to think about what it might be like to walk in, in their shoes. And I'm convinced that our dialogue, not only locally, not that we have a big issue with that, but certainly our dialogue on a national level would change drastically if we took time to, to, to see the discussion from the other perspective. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tucker?
Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman. I won't keep you long. I just wanna dovetail off of Councilman Snodgrass's remarks, and I wanna say thank you for all who attended. It was several council members up here, several people from the county that attend, well-attended function, over three hundred people showed up. And I, I can say this, I'm not afraid to say it, y'all can write it, whatever you want to. These programs aren't, let's beat up on white people. Okay? It really is a program where you can get true and good information. And the message yesterday was Luke six, verses twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And it just states that we ought to love people, love our enemies, love our folks that are indifferent from us. And that resonate throughout that church. And Ben, if you think about you and Councilman Bozard, some good singing, y'all missed it yesterday. They brought the clouds down and the heavens. That, that place was rocking. So I thank all who was in attendance. And we had our sheriff there and his staff, his chief was there and his captain, and many other elected officials. The chairman showed up, and I always shows up, and I appreciate that. And for you other ones, I challenge you again next year, you get a letter every year. That concludes my report.
Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Just briefly, I'd like to thank my colleagues on council and our staff and administration for all the calls and cards and meals and everything that you did while I was out convalescing. I certainly appreciate it, especially the meals. But I do thank you. It's so good to work for people that keep you in their prayers, because prayers really go a long way. I just wanna say thank you publicly. Thank you.
Very good. I'll close out, and, and then we'll do some other business. Some housekeeping. First of all, welcome back, Mr. Gardner. Secondly, Mr. Carpenter will take us through some of the particulars of the retreat. But I will tell you, we had nine hundred and fifty, thereabouts, responses. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, sir, to the Vision 2030 survey. We are hearing from the people, and the people are reading our stuff, Ben, and giving us feedback. Sometimes they're telling us to stick it in our ear, and other times they're not. But we are receiving the feedback we need from the We the People. I heard a bit about, well, let me just skip that and go to digitization. I'd like to hear from Mr. DeBoz a little later on about digitizing, digitizing our ordinances and so on, so they can be readily available, and so I don't have to have Mr. Webb come in here with three hundred and ninety-six pages. We can get it off the, off the web from Mr., for Mr. Webb and others like him. Chairman, as a chairman, I would, met with the treasurer, the auditor, the administrator, and the assessor. You have letters that we sent to the company that was supposed to do our tax notices, and they made a few mistakes. I'll ask your patience, but we'll work through that. The people of the county need to know that we're doing everything we could to get the tax notices straight, but we have to rely on contractors like every other county in this state, and the contractors let us down. I will close out on the economic summit. All of us are firm aware of economic development. I would close out with what I got out of the same conference that Mr. Jones went to. I got the quote that's also captured in the Chronicle Independent of hold the course, you're doing it right. Number two, if anything, do more and do more aggressively. So what I've asked, and we may differ on that, and I think it certainly differ with some of the ideas Mr. Jones has, and I look forward to the discussion. And the way to do that is, as he suggested and I suggest, that we go into the retreat ready to roll up our sleeves and then have a separate work session. But we're doing all the right things, and I, and I believe we can refine our course as has been suggested by all you councilmen at the retreat and at the work session. Mr. Carpenter, please.
Chairman, members of council, just a few items. Mr. Tucker, last night, you also said this won't be but a second before you started your comments.
I'm there for two hours.
Council retreat is Saturday, the second of February. It's gonna be a full day at the Economic Development Office, where we will be holding it starting at seven-thirty.
Now, don't forget the Friday event, please.
Yes, sir, I was gonna, running from seven-thirty until four-thirty. We, the public and the media invited. The night before, we'll be having dinner. Council members getting together to plan and go over issues, as well as getting a chance to introduce Mr. Snodgrass to them as well. And then you have in your possession a survey that has been given to you, asked to fill it out and return it in advance of that. If you're, if you will fill that out, it makes it a lot simpler in getting everything ready for the day itself when we start getting into what each one of you. No, sir, that's not the survey. The survey is put in your boxes. It's if you take it home, fill it out, and return it to Mary. We've done this for the last couple of years, so it should be very familiar to you once you get it. That makes it a lot easier to set up the day for you, so it can be a very productive day. And also, is the public will notice that there is construction now going on in the upstairs sections of this building. We have almost finished downstairs, and now we're working upstairs and getting offices renovated, carpet replaced, courthouse, as well as over here, and various buildings updated for the first time in twenty years. And there you see just basically upstairs, what you would see if you went up the stairs, where new walls, some of them are security being put in. Finance will be behind a security wall. Some of the areas, HR, and some of those will be put into more private areas. They will not be behind security walls, but they'll be more secure, so citizens and the public who need to come in will be able to have their issues handled in an appropriate setting. And as chairman, members of council, that's my report.
Uh, Mr. DeBoz?
Mr. Chairman, as you delineated previously, I believe there are two matters for executive session. The first one is on the new business C administrator's contract. And then the second one is, I would like to give a legal briefing on a contractual dispute that involves an elected official.
And those are two separate items?
Two separate items.
And they have no relation to each other. In other words, we're not gonna, it doesn't relate to Mr. Carpenter's contract.
No, it doesn't. No, they did not relate. And I believe, of course, you'll, I believe you indicated administrator's contract, you might take action. The other one, you would not.
Yeah. Can we ask that, we have Mr. DeBoz and Mr. Carpenter join us, and, and we'll adjourn. So can we have a motion to go into executive session and to return for a vote on the, on the administrator's contract?
Show me.
Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner, discussion. Everyone, we will be back after this discussion. It may go long, it may go short, and we will have a vote when we get back. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we are temporarily adjourned. Let's go. Can we have?
Motion to come out of executive session?
Yeah, second, please.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Who'd you get for second, old man?
I don't know.
Second came from Mr. Gardner.
Gardner, okay.
No discussion. We move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we move now to the item on the agenda we deferred, which is the administrator's contract, tab G, and also on the screen. Thank you, Danny, you're way ahead. And just to recite, the changes were to update to the two-and-a-half percent pay rise. Page two has a date change for the scope and period of work, and on page three has a, a date time group for when the contract would be executed. Can we have a motion to approve the contract as amended?
Show me.
Mr. Bozard, second for Mr. Cornell. Any discussion? I would just tell you, we got the best administrator in the state.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a mint now, just kidding.
I'm gonna shoot you. We have the best administrator in the state, and we've got the best county council in the state.
One of the best benefits of having Vic around is Laurie's around, too.
But anyway, this now gives us the way to go forward, and I will, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's now unanimous. And with that, it passes, and we move now to a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Second for Mr. Ca, uh, Mr. Snodgrass.
Them names killing you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Got the, got the twins down here on the right.
That's what you get for messing with me, see?
All right, any discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. It's been a long night, and it's been very productive. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor, and it's unanimous, and we're adjourned. Y'all be safe going home.
Thank you.